Oh, please.
Here. He's here virtually. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we now open the floor for public comments on agenda items. Do we have any public comments this evening? I know we have a bunch of special presentations. We have a lot of lovely visitors. If you're joining us virtually and you have a public comment, please feel free to type that into the chat box and we will read it into the meeting for you. And we will pause for a minute to give anyone time to do so. Okay, it looks like there is no public comment on agenda items, so we will move on to our presentations.
All right, thank you. Tonight, we have two presentations. We are recognizing some amazing contributions from our community. I will do the first presentation and then I'm going to have Ms. Carrera come up for the second round of presentation, or excuse me, recognition and then Mrs. Hale, would you do the honors of presenting the award? All right, our first presentation this evening is for two of our community members. I once heard, instead of giving to be seen, you should be seen giving. Dr. Longstaff and Dr. Abrica are true examples of this mantra. I first met them over seven years ago when they came to meet with me. Their son attended D seventy-six schools over thirty years ago and they were looking for ways to give back and provide more equitable opportunities for the students in our diverse district. They had been generously donating to our district over the past several years. They give out, they give out of the kindness of their hearts and do not want any recognition or public accolades. Each year when they come to meet with me in person, they have always said, please use these gifts as you see fit, whatever the students and/or educators need. They are true examples of humility and selflessness. In the seven years that I've been here, they've donated over $20,000 and even more upon my arrival. We have used their donations to fund professional development opportunities for our staff, STEAM initiatives for our students, a sensory pathway for students who require diverse social, emotional, and sensory supports, books to support our libraries and innovation centers. And during the pandemic, they wanted to make sure all students had access to resources and materials, so they requested to eliminate any lunch debts that families have had to offset the costs and provide instructional supplies for staff that they used to fund with their own personal funds. And the gifts don't stop with monetary donations. They've also given their personal time and resources by volunteering to help and support our referendum efforts in 2017. Our district has been touched by their continued support and generosity. Their heartfelt kindness and thoughtfulness have positively impacted hundreds of children, educators, and families over the years. On behalf of the Board of Education and the District Leadership Team, we want to express our heartfelt gratitude and appreciation for your generosity, support, and your service. You both are beautiful examples for humility, grace, and benevolence. At this time, we'd like to present you with a small token of our appreciation and recognition for your kind efforts and generous spirits. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Carrera?
Okay, good evening, everybody. I am going to give my recognition for these four individuals. I will say it in English and then I'm going to repeat it in Spanish. Whenever I attend events outside of our school district, I tend to hear about how D seventy-six is a hidden gem and parents sharing how proud they are that their kids attended this school district. The last parent told me on Zoom call, I love the work D seventy-six does, your dual-language program, and how you embrace cultural diversity in the district. I think that if it wasn't for parents like Araceli Mendoza, Eva Maria, and Celso, our D seventy-six B-PAC leadership team, a lot of parent voices might be left out. Our bilingual parent advisory committee meets to discuss all district updates, community issues, and ways to help our students and families in need. These four individuals selflessly volunteer their time to provide free support for others in our district and our community. They helped to run the welcome center, they helped to organize and pass out free food in whatever weather is thrown at us, they do food drop-offs to people's homes, they help with school supply drives, coat drives, holiday drives, resource fairs, and so many other volunteer efforts to make sure these kids in the neighborhoods have their basic needs met and that parents with language barriers understand the many opportunities available to them here at D seventy-six. They were also pivotal members in the Schools to Watch site Visit Parent Panel by sharing their experiences as parents, how much they love and appreciate D seventy-six. They are greatly involved in our district, not only for the success of their kids, but for, to advocate for all. Thank you for allowing me to share with you just some of the work that they do to continue supporting our students, families, and our districts. Cada vez que asisto a eventos fuera de nuestro distrito escolar, hay personas que mencionan como el distrito 76 es un diamante escondido y comparten los orgullos, lo orgulloso que están que sus hijos hayan asistido a este distrito. El último padre me dijo una llamada de Zoom, me encanta el trabajo que hace el distrito 76, su programa brilingue, y cómo acepta la diversidad cultural en el distrito. Creo que si no fuera por los padres como Araceli, Eva, María, y Celso, nuestro equipo de liderazgo de B-PAC, muchas voces de padres podían quedarse fuera. Nuestro comité asesor de padres brilingues se reúne para comunicarnos sobre actualizaciones importantes del distrito, asuntos que afectan la comunidad, y formas de ayudar a nuestras familias necesitadas. Estas cuatro personas ofrecen su tiempo como voluntarios para brindar apoyo gratuito a todos en nuestro distrito y ayudan a administrar el centro de bienvenida, ayudan a organizar y repartir comida en cualquier clima que se nos presente, hacen entregas de comida en los hogares de las personas, ayudan con eventos útiles escolares de abrigos, eventos navideños, ferias de recursos, y otros esfuerzos voluntarios para asegurarse que los estudiantes en estos vecindarios tengan sus necesidades básicas satisfechas y que los padres con barreras de lenguaje comprendan las oportunidades que el distrito 76 brinda a nuestras familias. También fueron miembros fundamentales siendo miembros del panel de Schools to Watch al compartir cuánto apoyan y aprecian el distrito 76, no solo para sus hijos propios, sino que por todos los estudiantes. Gracias por permitirme compartir con todos ustedes alguno del trabajo que hacen para continuar apoyando a nuestros estudiantes, las familias, y a nuestro distrito. Muchas gracias. Thank you, guys. Araceli, María, Celso, Eva, por favor, pueden pasar por su reconocimiento. On behalf of the board, I just wanted to echo and say thank you to everyone tonight. Really, the six people that we're honoring are such pillars in the community and the work that you've done in supporting our district really makes it run smoothly and makes it so that all of our families are engaged and all of our students have different opportunities. So, on behalf of the whole board, I just wanted to say thank you again. We really appreciate all of the service that you've provided our community. Um, and now, we're going to move on to the business part of our agenda. So, you are more than welcome to stay, but if you have other things you'd like to do this evening, our feelings will not be heard if you leave. Thank you very much. Is Eric gonna take pictures? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Daisy, Eric, Eric might come take a picture real quick for the B-PAC. That'd be great. Okay, now, we're going to move on to our business agenda for the evening. And we have a number of items for action. The first item for action this evening is the omnibus vote agenda. Items under the omnibus vote agenda are considered routine and are non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. If anyone, board member, staff, or administrator, or citizen wishes to have a separate vote on any item or items, that item or items will be pulled from the omnibus vote agenda and voted on separately. Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the omnibus vote agenda. Items A through E is listed. May I have a motion to approve, please? Okay. John is gonna vote, like, physically because the chat is not working for him, so. He voted yes. Yes. He's saying yes. Okay, that motion is approved. Moving on to the appointment of treasurer, which is something that we do annually. And then we will also have the treasurer bond that we're going to approve as well. Um, whereas the school code instructs the trustees of schools to appoint a treasurer, who shall be the custodian of school funds and responsible for all receipts, dispersments, and investments of the school funds, and pays orders issued by the school board. And whereas Mr. Eric Rogers will assume the position of Director of Finance and Operation on July 1st, 2022, and possesses the qualifications set forth in Section 5-1B of the school code. Therefore, be it resolved, the Diamond Lake School District Board of Education appoints Mr. Eric Rogers to serve as treasurer for Diamond Lake School District Seventy-Six for a one-year period beginning on July 1st, 2022, for the annual compensation of $3,000. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes. Yes, he says yes.
Yes.
Okay, that motion is approved. Moving on to the resolution for the treasurer's bond. Whereas the school code requires each treasurer of a school district to be properly bonded, the penalty of the bond shall be 25% of the amount of all bonds, notes, mortgages, monies, and effects of which the treasurer is to have custody. Therefore, be it resolved that the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education approves the application with broker's risk for the treasurer's bond. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes. Okay, the next item we are looking at is the maintenance storage facility construction bid that we discussed in our last meeting. It resolved, the Diamond Lake School District Seventy-Six Board of Education approves the recommendation from Wold Architects to award the contract for the West Oak Campus Maintenance Building to Tor Construction, Inc., in the amount of $525,000. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Okay, moving on to the custodial service bid that we also discussed in our last meeting. It resolved that the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the bid submitted by GSF for a three-year contract at a cost of $349,135.17 for fiscal year '23, $361,349.37 for fiscal year '24, and $374,033.11 for fiscal year '25. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes. Okay, that motion also passes. Moving on to the lawn care services bid. Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the recommendation to enter into a one-year contract extension with Countryside Industries as the lawns, the lawn and grounds contractor for the 2022-2023 school year at a total cost of $39,960 per year. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes. Okay, that motion also is approved. Moving on to the health insurance rates. Whereas the District Seventy-Six Insurance Committee has met and considered recommendations from Allied Benefit Systems for insurance rates for fiscal year '23 for the plan year beginning July 1st, 2022. And whereas the city has provided recommendation for rates approval by the board. Therefore, be it resolved, the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education approves establishment of health and dental insurance rates as presented. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes. He says yes. That motion is also approved. Um, next up is the public hearing date for the inter-fund transfer. It resolved, the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education approves to set a public hearing date for an $800,000 inter-fund transfer from the Education Fund to the Operations and Maintenance Fund on June 21st, 2022, and publish said notice in a newspaper of general circulation. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes. That motion is also approved. The next item up for action is the classified staff salaries. It resolved, the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education approves the recommendation to approve the classified staff salaries as presented. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes. That motion is approved. Next up is the District Leadership Team contracts. Whereas the Board of Education has reviewed the contract proposals for the District Leadership Team for the '23 fiscal school year. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the District Leadership Team contracts for fiscal year '23 as presented. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then the last item up for action is the personnel items. Steve, I have to tell you that everyone would like to vote no on this. But we probably won't.
Well, we have a cake, so you can't.
It always could, okay. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have one new hire, we have three resignations, we have three position changes, and one leave of absence. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes. That motion is approved. And that concludes our business agenda for the evening. Now, we will move on to board discussion. And the first item, sorry, the agenda is big, like scrolling. The first item up for discussion is really more of an FYI. Um, I have scheduled the diversity, equity, and inclusion training for the board on September 13th. I will follow up as we get closer to that date in the fall with specifics about the time, but I would think it would probably be similar in timeframe to the board meeting, although if everyone is flexible, maybe we can meet a little bit earlier because it'll go for a couple hours, so. I just wanted to give everyone a heads up on that. If there's, you know, if something comes up and that's not gonna work for the majority of people, just please let me know, because we are scheduling that with IASB and so they'll send out their team for that meeting. So, I'm excited about it. Hopefully, it'll be a really worthwhile training and we'll learn a lot. Um, the next item up on the agenda is the proposed shooting range. In the packet are the article from the Daily Herald, as well as an article giving some statistics from Scientific American. I think everyone kind of got the background information on this. This is essentially proposed to be a new facility constructed in the Tiff District that is, like, right behind Garden Fresh, essentially near the Bolt. Well, yeah. Yeah, it's gonna be, yeah, so it should be a new, yeah, it should be a new building in that area. Um, they didn't, from what I could tell, I didn't see any drawings or anything where they've said, like, presented anything to the Village of Mundaline. All that, I think the only information we have from the Village of Mundaline is that their trustees seemed interested in it and they made comments about it not being near homes. Obviously, it's near homes and near the elementary school. So, anyway, I just kind of wanted to open the floor up for discussion for that.
Yeah, I don't know, um, like, I guess it did surprise me when they said it wasn't gonna be near homes. And I guess my concern, I have a lot of concerns about this. One of them being, you know, obviously, it could add to the number of guns in our community and also, like, draw a lot more people into our community with guns. You know, it's like a 20,000-square-foot gun store and shooting range. And my other concern is really honestly, like, financially, I don't really understand why they would want to draw in a gun store into this Tiff District. It seems like it might sink their efforts to revitalize the area. It's not an approved use of this kind of retail area. And it seems short-sighted. So, of course, they haven't approved anything yet. It's gonna go to the Planning and Zoning Committee. Probably, I heard it was gonna be sooner than later, so we'll have to keep our eyes out on that if anyone is interested in sharing, you know, your opinion of it at the Planning and Zoning Meeting. But it would have to be approved through their Planning and Zoning Commission before it would even go to their, to the board for approval. From what I've heard so far, they haven't asked for any Tiff funding, but also, they haven't really proposed any specifics anyway, so I'm not exactly sure why they would want to go into this area if they weren't expecting some Tiff funding, but... Yeah, I don't know if anyone else has anything to add. I don't know if this is something that, like, our board would be interested or if this is something we could actually take a stance on, if it would kind of be more powerful in terms of guiding the village board. But that would be something I would be interested in, if that's something we can do.
Yeah, I think we could look into doing that. I know that a couple years ago, and I don't remember the exact timeline, the same company was looking at putting in the same thing into an existing structure that was closer to Grace Point Village, so it was slightly down the street. And they met with a lot of community opposition about it. They had some more concrete plans, so you could get an idea, but I think that's because the structure already existed. But I believe they were also asking for a zoning variance there because I don't think any of that area is zoned. But again, that was in the district and I do think, Mr. Rogers, did you attend that meeting, the meeting to talk? But, um, there were enough people that spoke out against it that the company, I believe, just withdrew their plans, right? Am I remembering that correctly?
Nope, you're correct. Yeah, there was a lot of opposition at the meeting, but I attended just on behalf of the district. Should we need to make a public comment on it?
Yeah, so I think we should definitely monitor that and, you know, we could decide as a board how we want to proceed. I mean, I think the overall concern is that it's very close to an elementary school. And so, obviously, that just ranges, raises concern, you know? And also, the other point I would make is that Mundaline has a lot of vacant facilities, so, you know, perhaps there's one better situated than this.
Or even like a warehouse district. It seems like that's typically where something like this would be located, not in a retail area next to a grocery store and, you know, a baseball center. I don't know, seems just like a strange project to be putting in there.
Anyone else have any other thoughts? John, did, sorry, yes, that's a good point.
I did text him to see if he has anything, but I don't think he can write in, so I'm not sure. I told him, you know, he had, just to type in his name.
Okay, if you...
Yes, he does.
He does, okay. Sure, I was gonna say, we could also discuss it at the next board meeting too, provided that they don't have a hearing between now and then.
I'm trying to think of when their next one is.
Eric, can we ask them to notify us?
To somebody in the village?
Yeah.
And just see if I can get on their docket or just get a little more info.
Thank you, because, yeah, that was, that definitely, when they presented the tip to us and they discussed, you know, the various pieces of it, that definitely was never on the radar for anyone.
Yeah, and I attended a Tiff meeting, like, three weeks ago and there was nothing mentioned about being a possibility. Yeah, and I attended a Tiff meeting like three weeks ago, and that was nothing mentioned about being a possibility. They want over future land developments and things like that, so Amanda in their office in charge of community development, I'll reach out to her.
Great, thank you. I don't know if John is still commenting. John, are you still typing? Okay. Would you mind reading that, Eric? Oh, there we go. John said, "I thought that the district was to benefit the community. I'm not aware of a strong, unsatisfied need for a gun store in Mundaline, certainly not the type of thing that we'd want to spend our tax dollars on." Yeah, I mean, that's, I think, that is the, I think, the key concern that the board has, is that obviously, we lose money in the district until the Tiff ends. And so, you know, for us to support the Tiff District, really, it should be things that are to benefit the community, especially the community in that general area, and I don't know that we see the benefit for that, so.
It seems almost like a bait and switch, you know, we're trusting that they're going to be making good choices that are going to benefit
Yeah.
all of our residents and students, and it doesn't seem like this is in line with that.
I would agree. I would also say that we really haven't seen the return on the Tiff Districts that we've been involved in previously. And so that would concern me that, you know, every time there is a Tiff District, Mundaline presents like kind of projections, and I know, obviously, the economy changes, so that's not perfect. But we really have never seen any of the kind of returns that they projected.
Based on that article, it appeared to be very positive as far as their trustees.
Yes.
felt very positive about that, so I would agree that they're probably going to want to move quickly, which means that we will want to also come to a consensus of how we feel about it as well.
Yeah.
It sounded like they were very feeling very positive about it.
John, did you have anything else you wanted to say? Otherwise, we will add it to the agenda again in two weeks. Okay. Okay. Moving on, we had no Freedom of Information requests. Under notices and communications, we have the board meeting calendar. We have a union thank you note for Teacher Appreciation Week, which was very nice of them to send. Then we have the invitation to eighth grade graduation, which is next Thursday night at six o'clock. I know everyone got an email about it, so if everyone wants to just R S P to Lisa so that she had, she knows and that the school can accommodate us, that would be great. Moving on to the Hadley Middle School visit.
Sure, yeah, we were just talking with Bob today. We're very excited as kind of, you know, the results of some things that we've achieved as a district and as a school. Glenn Allen Hadley Junior High or Middle School, they, it's a very big school, about eleven hundred students. They wanted to send a group out to see how we are doing our exploratory program for our multi-need students. We really created kind of its own program, essentially, and so a lot of credit goes to Hope Sown, to Katie Levy, to Sarah Byrne, and the work they've done, but they, we hosted them, they came in today, and they're very impressed. They're really excited about trying to provide opportunities for their students. They saw the things that our students are producing, which actually, we're at the art fair tonight. Some of the things that our students have made from there, so. It was just, it's a cool moment when you can showcase and the words out that were awesome, and schools want to come see us.
Okay, moving on to public comments. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items this evening? I will give anyone a minute to type that into the chat if they want to do so, and then we can read that into the meeting for you. It does not look like we have any in the room. Okay. Okay, perfect. Thanks, John. Do we have any other public comments? Okay, moving on to others.
So, as everybody knows, this is Dr. Draca's last board meeting. We're very upset. I know you're not, but we are very happy for you. We are very happy for you. We have put together a little tribute on behalf of the district leadership team and the board. So, Mr. Hanson, made it sparkle. Would you share that with us, please?
Hi, Steve. We've put together a short video tribute to share how much we value, love, and appreciate you. Enjoy.
Hi, Steve. It's your girl, Berger. I just wanted to reach out and say congratulations on this awesome new position. You are going to be so wonderful at it, and this company is so lucky to have you and bring your incredible leadership skills to their team. I want to thank you for this past year working together. It's been wonderful to hear your insights and get your feedback, and I appreciate everything you've done with our teams here. I D L S helped us create new roadmaps and overcome some of our curriculum challenges. Good luck, and we will certainly miss you.
Stephen, well, we've been working together for eight years, seven years here in District Seventy-Six, and I can't thank you enough for everything that you've done. You're a natural leader. You've helped me become a better leader. You've developed some great teams of professionals here that are not only sustainable, but they're thriving because of the guidance, the autonomy, and the confidence that you've given them to do what they need to do here. So, thank you so much for that. I'll always enjoy our discussions on philosophy of education, leadership, and most importantly, staffing. And I'm proud to have you as my teammate. Even more proud that we've become friends and even brothers over the years. Keep them in the dream, my brother. Godspeed. I'm gonna miss you. Best of luck to you. Dr. Steve Draca. Just want to say thank you for all your support and just being a great colleague, great person, a great human being to work with here. You know, best of luck to you and your future endeavors. You showed me how to, you know, what it looks like to be a great leader, so I just want to say thank you for helping me progress in this field. I wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors in the oil biz, and if you could bring down gas prices just a little bit, that'd be great. Besides that, though, hey, keep in touch. Take care.
Steve, I just wanted to thank you for being such an incredible example and leader to myself, and really, our whole year's team. With the many hats that you wear and the many things that you do, that you have done an incredible job of helping people believe in themselves, that they can make great choices for kids, that they can work together and come up with great solutions to any challenge, and you really celebrate each person, let them know that you see them. Appreciate that, so. Hope we can continue to carry that legacy on. Thank you very much. Have a great next seven-year journey.
Steve, it's been an amazing five years working with you. I'm so grateful to have worked so much with you. Thank you for always believing in me and for all the advice you have given me. It's been a blessing to be able to work with someone so kind and thoughtful like you, and I will truly miss you. I wish you nothing but the best and this new adventure.
Steve, it's been a pleasure to get to know you and work with you here at Diamond Lake. You've been nothing but welcoming, supportive, and amazing during the school year. Really wishing you nothing but the best, and I'm so thankful to work with you and learn so much. I really appreciate it, and thank you, and good luck.
Hey, Steve. It's been a fantastic six years working with you. I appreciate our time together. Appreciate many projects and overall friendship. We'll miss you and hope nothing but the best for you and your future endeavors. Keep living the dream, because I know you will.
Hey, Steve. Just wanted to write and say how much I've appreciated working for the last couple of years. The amount of knowledge and wisdom you've been able to share with me, I'll never be able to thank you enough for that, and you know, just every day coming to work and just seeing your passion for life, passion for helping people. You are going to do great things in your next life here, and I can now wait to hear all about it. You're going to be so missed, but, you know, I'll miss you from the bottom of my heart. So, love everybody. Good luck.
Steve, I am at a loss for words on how to capture my feelings for you and summarize our personal and professional relationship over the past eight years. I hired you as a principal eight years ago and was immediately impressed with your poise, professionalism, grit, and grace. So much so, I encourage you to join me in District Seventy-Six, and silly you, you actually did. Together, in your words, we built the District Seventy-Six plane while we were flying it. Wow, how much we have accomplished together. How much we have shared, discussed, debated, thought out loud about, cried about, and most importantly, laughed about. Steve, you are the epitome of a leader. Your confidence, capacity, skills, and talents have elevated District Seventy-Six on its journey to excellence. Your vision, determination, passion, and tenacity have helped us transform this district to a whole new level. You have no idea how your actions and your words have positively impacted and inspired so many in our District Seventy-Six family. You are a true asset to our district, our team, and our community. District Seventy-Six is in such a better place because of your strong, measured, and positive influence. Your efforts, dedication, and commitment to excellence have transcended our district to be one of national distinction. I am grateful to have had your loyalty, partnership, support, and love on our journey. It is my honor and privilege to have watched you grow as a leader and as a person. I have learned so much from your insights, your wisdom, and your intellect. You started out as my colleague, quickly became my friend and trusted advisor, and now are a cherished part of my family. We all need people in our lives who raise our standards, remind us of our essential purpose, and challenge us to be the best version of ourselves. Steve, you are that person to me and to so many others. Your dynamic legacy will live on in District Seventy-Six and in the many lives you have touched. We will miss you deeply, think of you fondly, and always be grateful for your leadership, service, and heart. I wish you continued success, good health, and much happiness as you continue living your dream. Sparkle on, Steve. We love you.
That's yours. Take it with you.
But truly, thank you. That was, that was really, really kind. I love the pictures, the thoughtful words. You know, truly to the board, you guys have been awesome. It's been a privilege to work here for the last seven years and to serve alongside all of you who serve our community to make Mundaline a better place. It's just, it's a great place, you know. Bob and I, and I obviously have become friends and colleagues and confidants and together for eight years. I know I couldn't, I couldn't thank her enough for all the trust that she's given me to help just, you know, be autonomous in this district and allow myself and the district leadership team to take ownership of our work. These guys. These guys are an inspiration. Always appreciate them and their work, and yeah, it's just been an honor, an honor and a privilege to work here, and, you know, thank you. I was fine until I looked at Kurt. I shouldn't have looked at Kurt. I was fine. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, truly, from the bottom of my heart. I do thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say, like, very quickly on behalf of the board, we really appreciate everything you've done. You really built the curriculum from scratch here, and so what you're leaving behind is going to benefit kids from, you know, really generations to come, so. I just want to let you know how impactful your work is. I also wanted to thank you for all of your patience. I know many of us have lots of questions for you. We've spent a lot of time asking you things that I'm sure were annoying, and you constantly showed us grace, and we're kind and patient, so thank you so much. We wish you the best of luck, and you will definitely be missed.
Thank you so much, Joy.
Are we gonna celebrate, or are we just? Okay, well, it's always anticlimactic to say, well, now moving into executive session. For the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity, and for the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the district, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired, and for the setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the district. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session? Yes. Okay, that concludes the meeting.